Okay, folks. We're now live for the Access Nashua Public Hearing. I want to thank everybody for coming. And thank you for registering as you came in as well. And if you missed it sometime during the meeting, give us your name and email address and so forth. And what we're going to do is we're going to open it up with a couple of short little videos to show you what Access Nashua is about. So you can hit it, Andrew.
I'm Kevin Avar, your host. And joining me for the very first show is Mr. Norman O'Neil from Beaker &amp; Yoga, Pastor Larry Heileman from the Curtis Blattland, Mr. John Preston from the Hollis Crossing area, State Representative George Lambert, Dave, Representative Mark Woyd, Representative Pete Silver, and Representative Carl Seidel.
I'll tell you alongside it, obviously, is Carl Seidel with me. And we're honored to have our wonderful mayor, Mayor Donna Lee Lozo. And we're fortunate to have the city clerk, Paul Bergeron.
And we have a special lady today, Sandra Zee.
We have our speaker at our house, Speaker William O'Brien.
Today, we're honored to have Senator Jim Luther with us.
We have a wonderful guest here, Mark Cookson, our alderman-at-large.
Hi, this is Ken Gidge, and guess what? This is Gidge World, and welcome to it. But I'll tell you what is good for everyone, and that is when we have a gentleman like Michael Axton. Welcome to Gidge World.
Well, Ken, thank you for having me. It's my pleasure to come in.
I have in studio this evening Bert Jantsch. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. Ward three?
That's correct.
Okay. Why are you running? I have two ladies here. They're both from The Telegraph. I have Jeannie Dabella, who's the HR person, Human Resources, from The National Telegraph. And I have Kimberly Linsky, and she's the event manager. And Cindy Rose Wald here. I have, as my guest, who, it's Nessie Feria. She works at the Boston Museum of Science.
I'm Matt.
And I'm Steve.
We're car guys all the way. We like V8, turbo fours.
Imports, domestics.
All makes, all models. If it's got a motor, we're in.
And we're going to try and make it go faster.
We've been at this a long time, but we're still finding stuff that we just don't know.
So come with us as we build some cars.
We're going to go talk to the pros.
And we're going to talk to enthusiasts like you.
And together, we'll tackle all sorts of projects throughout New England.
We'll show you how they do it.
How we do it.
And how you can do it in your own garage.
On a budget that hopefully we can all afford. This is Garage X. Real cars.
Real people.
Real budgets.
Okay. So this is Access Nashua. And as it says, it's your station. Andrew and I are here just to manage. When the light's back on. Okay. So it's your station. Andrew and I are here only to manage it for you and to work with you and help you and encourage you. What we want to talk about tonight is really get some feedback from all of you. We started back on July 1st, and from the history that I've heard, it's been a hard-fought effort to get public access here in Nashua. And many of you that are out here in the audience tonight know the history of that and are happy to see that we do have it now. However, again, it's a one-year contract, and what we need to do is to prove that people out there want public access and that you want to keep it here in Nashua. What we're going to do is really open the floor to comments from you folks. And we're also looking for polite criticism on what you've seen and what you'd like to see here at Access Nashua, so that it helps us to better formulate where we should be going in the future. Would you, you want to say anything?
The process of public access in Nashua has been an interesting one to go through for the past few months, and it's beginning to grow. It's like a snowball. It begins small, and it grows, and it grows, and it grows. And I think that the one-year contract, which was the requirement we had in July of last year, would only just be the beginning of the process. At this meeting here tonight, it's wonderful you've all turned out. I think it's awesome to see so many people here. I'd expect next year to have twice the size of this, if not three times the size. And it's just a snowball effect. And the drawback is it requires patience, of which I have so very little. Really is. It's a struggle. But we're making great strides. We've made tremendous progress in the past nine months or so. We have done an enormous amount of work. We have contacted so many people in Nashua. They've all been extraordinarily receptive to our approach and the idea. And people walk out and they go, wow, that's awesome. I really, really want to do a PSA. I want to do a show. And they don't come back. That's the sad bit. They get excited, they want to do it, and it's just finding the time. And I know you're all very, very busy. But if you can spare the time, it's not just an important thing to do, it's fun to come on down to studio and make a show.
We'll also talk afterwards about some of the equipment we have that you can see up there. And we'll be down on the floor after the meeting so that we can talk one-on-one as well. But if somebody would like to kick off the public segment of it, we'd appreciate it. If you come up to the mic and also say your name, and we'll go from there. It always takes one for us to get up there. So thank you, Dan.
Hi, my name is Dan Glunick. I live in, I'm a resident of Nashua. I use the public access to create a public service announcement, which I appreciate all the effort you guys did and helped me out on doing. The only thing that I can see that the studio is great and the equipment that you have, I haven't found any flaws in it. The only thing that I would like to see, too, that you could add, would be some training videos on the actual equipment that you use in the field. And what I mean by that is actually not only training on the equipment it's used, it doesn't have to be a formal thing, or if you can purchase one and just have a training video or something like that, but not only on how to use the equipment from a technical standpoint, but also some pointers on, okay, if you're going to take a shot out here, this is how you would want to schedule the shot. This is how you do the lighting. And maybe there's some videos online you could just make a list of or something like that that we could have access to using the specific equipment that you've purchased. The other thing that, I do a lot of the editing, and one of the things that I would like to see is like a mini library. You have a couple of books there and a couple of resources, and a lot are available on YouTube and stuff. But sometimes it's nice to have a book at the desk so you can actually read it and maybe make that part of the checkout, just like you have the equipment checkout. You could borrow the book for two weeks and/or work with the public library to get them to get a couple of books. And I would like, like, I'm very good with software because I'm a software engineer, so I understand the software a lot better than most people would. But it'd be nice to have like two books. One, a beginner's book, like one of those dummy books, you know, you know, videoing, or Sony Vegas for dummies or something like that.
I could write that one. I could write that one. It'd be great. Yes, okay.
See, now, there's an opportunity. You can write it and sell it to other people, too. Or video on the same. But a book is easy to access when you're at the machine. And then you also need a high-end one. You have one good book there, but you need another couple of high-end books because sometimes you're looking on how to do specific things. And different books have different ways they do it. And hopefully, you'll get renewed for another year because I have a lot more projects that I want to do before, in, on August. And coming up in August, there's the Greeley Park Art Show, and I was hoping to be able to learn the equipment before then so that I can actually take it to the art show and actually interview some artists on-site, so we can have a do-in-one location shoot. And even if I don't make a whole TV series out of it, I hope to do one or two little mini-shows from the artist interviews kind of thing and show their art on the thing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, who's going to be next?
That's a very good idea, Dan. We're working on putting instructional videos together. And in fact, I was just going to show you the first one we've did, which actually shows people how to get to the studio. How many of you have been to the studio? How many of you knew the way to get there, to first of all? I mean, it's obscure, to say the least. And so we just put together a video which shows you how to get to the studio, which I thought was a good start. But the idea of using the field equipment, that's a very good one. We'll put together. Thank you, Dan. Good feedback.
How you doing? I'm Kevin Avar with Gate City Chronicles. We, I host a couple, actually, of shows, Gate City Chronicles from the Capitol. Number one, I'm very appreciative of the opportunity to be part of this. I know that the gentleman that spoke before me talked about doing an instructional video. One of the nice things about my show is if you want to come on my show to get used to it, to get your feet wet, you can come on and sit on. And I like to ask people to give me 10 questions, so that it's, the conversation goes, it continues, you get familiar with how the studio works. You can either talk about your business, you can talk about your show that's going to be coming on, and you set up the questions, and I just become, you know, a mouthpiece for you, so that you get your message out. That's one of the things I really like about my show, and it covers everything, from preachers to businesses to state representatives, everybody. I guess the only suggestion that I would like is, I'm usually having to go outside and find, and wave down my guests, hey, we're over here. So that would be a good suggestion. But I'm very happy about the opportunity that is presented here, and I hope to have a lot more shows.
Thanks, Kevin. Appreciate that. The question of signage is a very good one, since we're not only hidden, but we don't even put signs up to tell people where we are. We're working on the signs. Believe me, we're working on the signs. Another one. It's a race, it's a race. I love this. It's awesome. Yeah.
I'm Carl Seidel, one of the hosts on People's View. And I'd like to congratulate you on the job you've done. It's been very nice, easy to work with, and nice equipment and facilities. However, I think one of the things we want to do is get the word out, get people to know about what's happening, all the different types of programs that are on there. Word of mouth is actually the best, but maybe we can get somebody to do a little article for us or for you and bring some of the programs that have, you know, people that can go and get archives of the programs that have already been shown and get that publicity out. I think all of us can help on that. And I think that's one of the major things that has to grow. You want to grow your audience right now.
Yeah. Thanks, Carl. Good. Good feedback. Go on, you can make it, you can make it. Go on. Nobody else is coming.
Hi, my name is Liz Richapi, and I'm with the Nashua Art Commission among, and a resident of Nashua as well. And I'm really glad to know about Access Nashua. In the past, I've been a little confused about some of the community stations, and I also have to, you know, agree with the gentleman who is just up here about getting the word out and finding out what the programming is and, you know, what's happening. One of the reasons I'm here is I'm curious to see if there's perhaps a relationship that can be forged between the Art Commission, who's trying to get the word out about the cultural community in general, maybe through TV as a media. So I'm kind of here to listen and to learn about, you know, what you're doing and maybe look into producing shows for some of the performing arts groups in the city, the artists in the city, et cetera.
Outstanding. I look forward to doing that. And we have your name, so we'll be in touch, and I'm sure we can find a way to work together. There is, I don't think there's anybody who runs a nonprofit or works in the arts that we can't have a relationship with. So if you are thinking about it, just give us a call. That's all we ask. Sorry.
Oh, yeah, that's okay. My name is Dan Richardson. I live at 70 Berkeley Street. I don't have any vested interest at all, so I'm speaking as just an ordinary citizen of viewer. I have, in the past, advocated to my state representatives to go to the Board of Aldermen meetings so that they can talk about what's going on in Concord. And lo and behold, now we have cable or Access Nashua, now essentially serving the same purpose in the shows that we have through the various representatives that are involved, talking about what's going on in Concord. And I think that was important. My view is it was important for them to be speaking to the Board of Aldermen, to tell them what's going, actually have a dialogue going on. But this, this is great. This serves the same purpose in essence, so that, you know, because a lot of things, you know, cuts going on in Concord, and it's, you need to know and understand what the details are. And this serves that purpose, and I really appreciate the individuals involved that are doing this. The area that needs improvement is the shows, the producers, they're great people, committed, needs more pizzazz, though. The shows, I, you know, you take a look at the different shows that are on there, watch the Garage X, too. I don't know who they got doing the Garage X thing, but there's a, there's an example of how to do it right, okay? Because you got, it's snappy, and it moves along, and it holds your interest. And I think, you know, it'd be good to sort of translate that kind of
Pizzazz.
Pizzazz over to the other shows. They don't have to be the same, but it's, that's the whole crux of the thing, is to retain an audience, you know, keep it moving along.
Do you know how to spell that, Dick? Pizzazz.
Got it down.
Got it down. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate the feedback. And Matt and Dan have worked very hard on Garage X. They do all the work. They do the filming, they do the editing, the production. And in fact, I was critiquing Dan tonight, in fact, Matt was saying to him, you should get more pizzazz. It's strange you should come up.
Yeah, well, my name is Dan also, Dan Toomey, and I live here in Nashua, Ten Lanten Lane. I volunteer at the station. I work full-time in Lowell in the field. And so I volunteer and help do some of the programming. I'm also on the advisory committee. You've got a great little spreadsheet, I guess you would call it, or a data sheet, anyway, that tells all the volunteer opportunities that there are. And, you know, Lowell has had very good community programming for more than 15 years. And, you know, hopefully, that will be the same thing here in Nashua. But one thing from, I'm a community media director in Lowell, and, you know, I think people ought to know that you don't have to come in and start out as a producer and learn all how to do editing and learn how to do, you know, studio production and all that. You can volunteer, and you can work on somebody else's program. You can be a guest on somebody else's program. You can help out in various kinds of ways. And you folks have listed all of the ways that people can volunteer, you know, have a really good, I don't know if it's a spreadsheet or a data sheet or whatever. And people ought to take a look at it, and it's a great way to get started, just start small and, you know, help out.
Thank you, Dan. That's very true. And we are always, always looking for volunteers. So anybody in the audience tonight wants to volunteer, we'll be ready to take your name. Always looking for volunteers. Excellent. Thank you. Next one. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Judy Hogan, and I have been a strong advocate of public access television in Nashua since 2004. I think my cohort, Fred T. Boom and I, have been fighting with every board member for many years in an effort to get community television to Nashua. And I think the turning point was when I brought a map to the Board of Aldermen meeting, showing all of southern New Hampshire, every single community had a public access station except Nashua. And I portrayed Nashua with a big black dot, and I said, Nashua is like the black hole. We have no community television. And that sort of gave everybody some time to think about it. And then finally, everyone became more receptive to it, and then the mayor, God bless her, funded it for one year. So the big question is, where do we go from here? How will the channel be funded in the future? And is it in her next budget? And that's my concern, because I'm so happy to have it, and I watch it, and I'd like to volunteer, and I'd like to be a participant, I'd like to be a producer eventually. But I also would have to begin at the very bottom and learn the process. I'm wondering whether anyone has approached the mayor about funding it for her upcoming budget. I know she told me it was a one-year trial and that it would have to make it that first year. People would have to be interested in it. It would have to have the support of the community. And by the turnout tonight, it looks like we will have support from the community, and that's very encouraging. We all know that we pay franchise fees every single month. Our franchise fees, in the event anyone is interested, since my involvement in 2004 to the present date, our franchise fees have added up to $7,789,334. So when you see that little line item on your Comcast bill that says franchise fees, all of us pay it. Anyone who is a customer of Comcast, we all pay it. That's how much money we have given. And the $100,000 we got back for our public channel is a drop in the bucket. And I don't think it's unreasonable to ask the mayor to at least partially fund this channel going forward. Maybe we can have some fundraising, and maybe you can have some sponsors to pick up the other half. But it would seem reasonable to me, when you think about how much we contribute, that we get a little bit back, because we seem to have money for a lot of things. And this is something for the entire community. This is for the young and for the old and for the, anybody who's interested. And I have seen a few programs that I found quite interesting. And Kevin Avar, I watched him, and I was just really captivated. So I think he does a great job. And I know that I would like to get involved, and I think that it has great potential for our city. And I'm so glad you're here, and I know you're doing a great job, and I only can hope that we can go forward and that the city will continue to support you. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Very much indeed. What I'd like to do is talk about the survey, because in order for the mayor to make her decision, we've been working on a survey and having people fill it out. There's a sample, there's some on the table, but also, if you haven't filled out our Access Nashua survey, you can also go to accessnashua.org, and right on the front page, you'll see the survey click here. And go ahead, it's going to take you maybe five, 10 minutes the most to fill it out. But it's going to give us the information, plus tonight's comments and everything, for us to put together a report that we're going to submit to the city and to the mayor and to the CTAB committee with the results. So if you haven't filled out the survey, please go to the website, or if you have a few minutes tonight, you can grab a copy and fill it out here, and that would help with the information.
Hi.
Hi.
Andrew and Dick, thank you for doing this. And the one suggestion I would have is, are we going to be able to see the lineup on Comcast so that we can set our DVRs? We can see what shows are going to be played and set that up before, to view our favorite shows.
No, that's something that throughout the country, meg stations have been requesting and arguing with Comcast and all the other cable companies, and it's not happening. I think there's only like one or two places in the country that have been able to get it up on the, you know, the guide.
Really?
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
But as we get more established, and we have, the programs become more locally oriented and whatever, I would hope that we'll be able to publicize much more effectively the schedule, so people can find it on the website, they can find it in the paper. But we want to get it publicized, so people can find it and know when they are, when they're on.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Good evening. I'm Irene Holland, and I live here in Nashua. And I volunteer for two different organizations. One of them is Nashua Community Concert Association and Riviera College Rise Program, of which you had a sample, the PSA. And I've recently started using Access Nashua and am very pleased with what has been done. You've run PSAs for us. We're very happy with that. On Saturday, I talked with Dick on the phone and laid some plans for some future things, and he forwarded my email to Kevin, and today I had an email from Kevin. I am so impressed with the rapid response I get with any request I have, so I think this is just fantastic. And I have asked at the Rise Program, how many people watch that? And I was very impressed with the number of hands that went up. So people are watching it, and we need to continue this. It's a great benefit for the city in getting the word out about what's going on. Thank you for your work, gentlemen.
Thank you, Irene.
Thank you very much.
And we'll talk some more later on the two shows you want to do.
Come on, Dan, you're lurking there. No more lurking. Come on downstairs.
I'm also a Dan. Hi, all the Dans. Dan Young, producer of Garage X.
Way to go.
I'd like to, first, I'd like to, first, I'd like to thank the Academy, no, I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank Access Nashua, because without Dick, without Access Nashua, we could not have produced our dream and our vision for what we wanted, you know? We had the dream, we had the vision, but we didn't have everything that we needed to get from point A to point B. And, and thanks to Access Nashua, we have that. I'd like to thank you for the kind words, sir, on our show. And as far as one of the other comments about the training and such, I think that that would be a great, a great thing, because when I was not familiar with the editing, and, you know, the same thing, I went onto YouTube and I found all sorts of video game editing footage, but nothing that really helped us until we could get along. Now, I've been editing for a while, so I kind of already had a, had a little bit of a leg up so that I knew what I was looking for. And lastly, to all the, all the people out here and in Nashua, if we're being, are we being recorded right now?
Yes.
And in Nashua, whatever, I really encourage people to come down and volunteer and help out. And, you know, we, the gentleman back there talked about, about pizzazz. And we put in, we put in what, like 80 hours into each episode so far, and that's per person. And I've got ideas for many more shows, but there is no way that I have that time in my budget to do it. And I would like to, I would like to volunteer and volunteer some of these ideas and volunteer to help teach and help train and maybe get a group together to make another one of these shows happen, and then maybe another one of these shows happen. So if anybody has any ideas, get them, get them in, and we'll, we'll make them happen.
Is there any opportunity to get students involved?
Yes.
Yes. Yes?
Yes.
I'm saying yes.
Absolutely.
They often say yes.
We've begun a training program with the Boys and Girls Club. We've taken two or three of the young kids out of the Boys and Girls Club, and we're training them now on the basic process for both production and shooting a PSA, is what we're working on right now. Thanks, Dan.
That's all I got. Thanks.
Thanks.
I have to admit, I'm also a Dan. And my name, my name is Dan.
We should have gone further in the directory, shouldn't we?
And I am part of
And I am part of Judy Hogan and Dan Hogan. We both work trying to get PEG involved in Nashua, and Nashua involved in PEG. And we just ask you to keep in mind that it takes a while for people to understand what comes in, on which of the three channels. And I'm sure there's some confusion within the group as to what things ought to be, but that'll be worked out. Happy to hear the young lady over there speak of getting the youth involved. That was one of the points I've made here. I work with a high school in the athletic program, track and field, but you often hear the comment, "Does nothing for the kids to do in Nashua." Now, I don't particularly agree with that, but I'm sure that a lot of them feel that way. And if we can get them more involved in this, I think we'll have customers that'll stay with us the rest of their lives. So, appreciate all the work that you've done. We tried during the time they were putting on the, developing the education channel, to get people into various colleges in Nashua, the nursing programs in Nashua. We handed out brochures, little flyers to these people to try to get them involved, and I would say, "We need the same thing here." Got to get everybody in Nashua, something in their hands that they can look at to say, "Hey, I didn't know about this, happy to get this, like to see it, like to get involved in it, stay with us. You've got a great program. Keep it up."
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Very much, Dan. We should have gone further through the alphabet, you know, stopping at Dan is a bit embarrassing, now.
I am not a Dan.
Oh, sorry. Thank heavens.
Sorry, I'm a Daniella.
Daniella.
Daniella, yes.
Okay.
Actually, I'm a Lee. And I was wondering, we've been talking about youth, and sort of dancing around that. You have close proximity to Nashua High School. Have you developed a relationship with that school, or those kids, or is there a point person?
The high school itself is a very, very efficient high school, beautiful high school, when I round it. And Pete Johnson takes care of the education element of the high school itself. But the high school has got a very, very well-equipped studio and environment. They've got a better layout than Access Nashua has, to be honest. Go and borrow theirs, it'd be good. But they have a very, very fine student, which I think is very well-populated by students. They're very interested in the program. So, much as I'd love to go and spend time at high school because of the equipment, I think that they're well-taken care of.
Okay.
Thank you for asking that. The Boys and Girls Club is one that we're focused on, because they don't seem to have anything at all down at the Boys and Girls Club. These are the boys and girls who've got less than the average person, and need to have somewhere to go after school, and they're the ones we'd like to focus on, and to provide them with some ability to get into media. And that's what we're going to do. Mr. Tebow. Hi, Fred, how are you?
Oh, how are you doing?
Doing good.
I'm Fred Tebow. Nice to see Judy Hogan.
Nice to see you.
And she's a big champion. We should mention a couple of champions. Andrew Sonada, who's been chairman of the CTAB for a long time, has done an outstanding job. The guy in this room that's probably done more than anybody to make peg, E, G, and P, what they are, is John Barker in the back. John Barker is the IT manager, and if you've seen what technical knowledge goes into making all this work, and wiring up the entire city, there are a lot of buildings connected to this system. Not just one or two buildings, a lot, all the school buildings. I forgot how many. 16 more buildings, John. How many buildings have we got? How many buildings do we have hooked up?
About 16.
16. That's a lot of buildings, if you think about it. The other technical advantage I want to mention, and I walked in a little bit late, is streaming video. I don't know if you guys know it, but you can dial into the internet, and you have to go to the access site. And you can stream the E channel, you can stream the P channel, you can stream the government channel. That means you can be anywhere in the world. You can be traveling anywhere. You can just bring up the URL, you can see the programs as if you were watching it right here in Nashua.
Thank you for mentioning that, Fred.
I'd like to mention that. That should really be advertised. I don't like the way you have to climb into the city website and dig down to find all this information.
You can go through the Access Nashua website, our own website, and one click.
Yeah, but you've got to know that. People typically will look at GoNashua website, and you should have on the main page, a pointer to P, to E, and to G. So, it's easy to find streaming, for those of us that aren't all that knowledgeable. On the menu thing, I have difficulty figuring out what show plays when. And I don't want to turn a computer on every time to go look at the schedule. All I see is just the day's program. We've talked about this before. There ought to be, you've got plenty of real estate, we do the bulletin boards, you've got the tower and all that, the Library Hill, you've got plenty of real estate left. So, is there a way to get a schedule for the entire week?
And what you're referring, oh, for the entire week?
Yes.
Wow.
Not just the day. So, you know what, if I want to see, I'll give you an example, there's a show that Silver runs, the Republican channel, right?
Yeah.
And he has very interesting guests, but I don't know when it plays. It plays twice a day, and I don't know what time it plays. And I, so, I don't spend a whole day saying, "Oh, it's 2:00, let me go watch it." I'd like to have a schedule somewhere, so have in mind way ahead, you know, when his program comes up, so I can plan to see it.
Yeah, other than the websites, because it is up on the website.
I know that.
Right. But you're talking the bulletin board.
Because most people, and like myself, even off time, don't spend all the time, they go to the computer, don't spend the time looking at the website.
Yeah.
So, is there, I've asked about this before, it could be a rolling screen, it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. The G channel sort of has it, it has a ribbon. And I'll watch the ribbon go by, and see, gee, on Tuesday, they're going to replay, or Wednesday, they replay the finance committee meeting, and I'll plan to watch the finance committee meeting. It could be a ribbon, it could be a bar, you know, it's something, especially for seniors. Seniors watch this program, they watch the channel, local stuff. And it ought to be easy for them to see the menu.
Thanks, Fred. I appreciate that.
I expect you have an answer, but think about that.
Yeah. No, and what we'll do is, I'll discuss it with Pete Johnson, who's helps us in designing that bulletin board layout, to see, yeah, how we could do that.
I'll talk to Mr. Barker. He'll figure it out for you.
Thank you, Fred. Appreciate it.
And nice seeing you again, Fred.
Yeah. Good to see you. Anybody else? There's room at the podium, as they say. There's room at the podium.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I want to thank you for the fine job you've done on putting this together. I was another advocate for public access, and then pegged back in the early days. We had a VCR in the second floor of the firehouse, and the cable would always come unplugged from the back of it, and my brother Pete is now the education coordinator, was saddled with that for a while. Things are much better now, and much, much better now that we have public access, as the third leg of the triad. It amazes me how quickly you've been able to get things up to speed, and the quality of how you curate the overall take from the state and national feeds, as well as what we're, you know, what we're doing at house. I'm delighted with the Betty Boop videos, that takes me back to my childhood, and brings me a big smile.
Can you speak into the microphone, too?
I thought I was.
Move the podium closer to the mic.
Somebody...
Move the mic closer to the podium.
Sorry about that. Is this better?
Yeah.
Much better.
Yeah.
Anyway, so, just wanted to pass along some kudos on that. I think you guys have done a fabulous job, of we, you know, the process that brought you of the various, you know, constituents who were the other potential, you know, bidders, so is it was on this. Very, very happy that we have you folks, and just can't say enough of the things about you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Anybody else? This is your opportunity.
What I'd like to, okay, come on up, Dan. We can just say, "Come up, Dan," and we're 80% right.
Actually, after listening to the comments, I have a suggestion for the people in the audience. You do a lot of nonprofit work for nonprofits, you do a lot of public service announcements. I think what you should try to contact them, to see if they can put in their newsletters, saying, "Oh, can you please watch our public service announcement on public access TV, and check us out on the web," so you can get the advertising, free advertising. We're doing free advertising on the TV for them. So, maybe they could reciprocate and put it in their newsletters. And it's simple as, when somebody comes in and talks to you about the public service announcements, creates one, or something like that, you can say, "Oh, by the way, can you talk to your newsletter person, and have them add in the link, so to go, you know, to the AccessNashua.org, and also publicize it in your thing, so you can reciprocate." And that will help get the word out a little faster. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Good idea. Very good idea. Yeah. Anybody else? Well, thank you very much indeed for coming tonight. It has been very informative, and we'll take all the suggestions back, that Dick's been scrubbing away here like crazy for the past half hour or so. And we're not making a commitment, but we will certainly work to do this, because we want to see this, obviously, be a success. And it's important to us that it be a success professionally, it's important to us, but we want it to make it a success for Nashua. This is your TV station, it's for you to use, we're merely here as the custodians. So, thank you very much indeed for coming tonight. I do appreciate it.
And if you haven't been to the studio, pick up one of our cards, give us a call, and come on down, and we'll give you a tour. Thank you all, and if you need another little snack, feel free to go ahead.